Welcome to The Source with your host Dr. C.T. Curry. And co-host Kobe Owens. News all across the nation. The Source. Stay in the loop in the city of Wilmington, Delaware. Work together for change in the community. A call to action to find the resources. The Source, the latest in news.
Good evening, this is Dr. Curry.
This is Kobe Owens.
And welcome to The Source. Kobe, this week as we come on the show, we are proud to announce that reported, there have been no shootings last week. I have seen an uptick in the presence of police even here in the South Bridge section of the city. Not saying that that's the plan, I don't know. But I will say that I have not, have you heard of any shootings?
No, I haven't heard of any shootings, but like you, I have seen an uptick in police presence. It looks like community policing has been spread back out throughout the city. Then also I've seen more county police in the area as well too. I don't know about over here, but definitely over like the Governor Prince area over my way.
Okay, now do they have their police vehicles or do they have unmarked cars?
Most of them are police, like the labels county or city.
Is there, is there a agreement they have with the city to be able to help the police?
Yeah, so Newcastle County Police and Wilmington Police, as well as the state police have a have an agreement in which jurisdictional agreement in which they can all go anywhere pretty much in the city, right? Now with that, they're supposed to notify dispatch if they're in the area looking for a suspect, but they can also ride through as well too, because we are a county entity and then of course we're a part of the state as well.
Right, understood. I just wanted, you know, I was curious and those who watch us, they tend to like the fact that we do try to ask some of the questions that they may be on their mind as well. But there was a body found in the Christiana River on Sunday afternoon. What do you know about it?
Yeah, so around 12:25 that afternoon, they received a call regarding a possible body in the water. When the police arrived, they did locate a man's body in the water. They removed the body and turned it over to the Delaware Division of Forensic Science to investigate it. As of right now, there's no additional information about how, why he was in the water, cause of death or whatsoever. And there could be multiple different, you know, reasons and stuff like that. He could have drowned, he could have been, you know, killed or whatsoever. So there hasn't been any additional information released on that. But I do know, you know, a lot of people were talking about it on social media that they had found a body down there. And this isn't the first one they've found. They've, I think this is like the third or fourth one this year that they have found in the river.
Now is there a place a person can jump over if they want to commit suicide? Is that, could that have been it?
Yeah, there's multiple bridges throughout the city and a body can wash up somewhere. I will say at least two of the others were murders and then it looked like the body was dumped there. There was actually a very graphic video that was posted to social media. Unfortunately, some people think to go to social media instead of calling the cops right away when they see stuff like that. And the video did go viral a little bit and it looked like foul play was involved. Not with this one, but again, you know, we, we should keep an eye on that as a city.
Yeah, and, and, and I, because it's a little troubling and you never know what's going on. But, but I agree with you, we, we tend to put more faith in social media than we do in calling the police officers who, who, who really supposed to be the ones investigating. But I will say for the last couple of weeks, we've been doing some nice updates. And when I say nice, I don't mean nice in, in that we're happy that these things have occurred, but nice in that we're starting to get a little bit more information. So Kobe, I don't know what you're doing by continuously saying we need more information, we need more information, but obviously somebody's looking at the show and they're saying, you know what, let's give them a little bit more information. But there are two updates to two investigations that were going on. And the first one was the man, a 60-year-old man on the 300 block of 27th Street. There was an update on that, what do you know about that?
Yeah, so two people, a man and woman have been charged in connection to the assault that resulted in the death of a 60-year-old man last summer. Adrian Richardson and Sonia Tool, 52 and 54, have been indicted in connection to that death of Dewayne Clifton. They were arrested on Monday. And again, this is the second assault this year in which there has been an arrest made. There was an arrest made in the assault for the elderly woman earlier this year as well too. So again, that, you know, I'm glad to see that they're not letting these cases go cold and that they are bringing some justice to the families as well too.
Yeah, well, the question then I would ask is, there was two women who did this. Have you heard anything or is there any reporting on why they assaulted this 50, I think he was 60-years-old, Clifton?
Yeah, he was 52, now that was a man and woman.
It was a man and a woman.
And a woman, it was a dispute and that led to him being assaulted. And, and again, that is something that, you know, we've seen a little bit more of recently. We had the case over in Western City, we had the one over West Side and then of course on 27th Street as well too. But then also there was another arrest made, Nathan Harris, who was also arrested on Tuesday. Or no, Nathan Harris was the one who was arrested back in October in regards to the 60-year-old man Edward Wiggins, who had died as a result of an assault from him. So again, they have been knocking these cases out and solving them. This is the second one that they solved in like a month's time.
Yeah, is it, are there new people there? I guess you wouldn't know that, would you?
No, I, I, I don't know if it's new detectives or what. What I, I feel as though is they've gotten the resources they needed. So it may be the same people, it's just different. It's different individual, like different resources and technology that they can use to actually address some of the issues that they're seeing.
Okay, well, I, I just want to make sure those of you who are watching us that you do know that when we, we report some of the incidents of all the crimes and things that are happening in and around the city, as we get new information, we want to continue to make sure we update you on the information that we get, whether it be through the local press or through whatever investigative reporting that we decide to do. We want to make sure that you get as much information as possible. And sometimes I'll say there's no reported, let's say shootings for an example, but in actuality, there may have been some because everything doesn't hit the paper, everything doesn't hit the press. But I, I have two strong resources outside of the press that have proven to be kind of reliable. It's really funny because people used to, in back in the day, say everything you want to know, just go to the beauty shop or the barber shop and you'll find out what's going on in the community. And I used to think that was crazy, that's not true, but in actuality it is because they have all the details and they even know sometimes what has happened, has occurred. But until we can substantiate, we certainly would not record that. But, but I'm very grateful for that. This, last thing I want to do on, in this segment of our show is that we're getting ready to enter into a new council.
Yes.
And, and there's, you know, you're not, you're not the spokesperson for the council and I, and I will never put you in that predicament unless there were some issues that we just need to discuss and get some better clarity. How, how, how do you feel the transition is going or is there a transition? See, I don't know, now I'm not speaking as a person who got an answer to this. I'm just, is there a transition where you all get together as one whole group before the other ones leave? Talk about where they are on this, that, or the other. What happens now?
Yeah, so earlier this week, we had a public meeting, a meeting at a hole in which it gave opportunity for the three new council people to meet with some of the current ones. We went over like FOIA regulations, rules of council. It gave us the opportunity to ask the law department like questions about how to introduce legislation and stuff like that. So that was good, right? In regards to a transition from position to position, for me at least, I have not talked to the person who I beat, right? He will not talk to me. He, you know, he's telling people I'm in the position already and that they should contact me. That's why I've said on this show multiple times, unfortunately, I'm not in the position just yet, not until January 7th at 8:00 PM.
A little bit after that because that's when it starts.
That's when it starts. But yeah, so again, I think there should be some decorum there as well too of like, let's sit down and talk about what's ongoing projects do we have in the district? Because of course, I'm not going to know everything coming from the outside. But then also projects that are in the works, right? I may not know about those for one or two, three months after I'm in the actual position if we don't have those conversations now. But I know others have had conversations, but the, from my understanding, that has not been mandated from this council and that's fine, it doesn't have to be.
It's not fine, I, I disagree with you. I, I don't think it's fine because you're not representing you, you're representing the people. And what we have to learn is that, and I call it the Donald Trump syndrome. If I lose, then things are wrong and I'm gonna, I'm gonna rebel against it. If I win, then I'm gonna continue to do whatever it was I was doing. Now, if, if you're saying that the person who is, who were, who was defeated in a position on council is not meeting, not returning calls and things of that nature, then that's a problem. Because it's not about them, it's not about you, it's about the position and making sure that the district or the, at large is, is going to be secured for the time to, to come. So that, that could be also a Democrat issue too, because I think maybe there needs to be some policy or something with the city council where there's a meeting of the minds and we really get into talking about what is going on. Because you're right, you won't know for a couple of months.
Right, and again, it's nothing against that. You know, at the end of the day, you know, I'm gonna do what I gotta do to make sure I represent the district. And you know, that means leading on the at-larges for a little bit to know, to learn from them about what projects are going on. I'm gonna do that, right? I'm rolling up my sleeves and working with, you know, all 12 of my other colleagues. But again, this is just what's wrong with politics right now. People are tired of the petty games.
Yes.
We are now in a lame duck session of this 108th Council. And I, I'm just gonna be honest, they are doing more work during this session to try to push things through before new people get there than they were before. And you know, now they're, they're talking about all these different other long-lasting levels of legislation, trying to move contracts up and everything. Again, have faith in the voters of the city who elected people to come in. They elected a new mayor, they elected new council members. They returned some of y'all to y'all seats, right? So again, have faith in them. And have faith is, this is the direction that they want people to reflect their views.
But a lot of the powers to be in the city that you don't see, people who, who get all the breaks, they see the writing on the wall and the writing on the wall is that there's been people from the community asking for the city council president to get the power back, to be able to control it better, as opposed to one individual who can manipulate certain council members, being able to have the team around them. And they're probably saying, you know what, this is not going to work well for me. So what we gotta do is we gotta get everything through. The question is, well, well, not question, one of the things that we need to do is you see some stuff pushing through and I know you're gonna stay on the job, we need to expose it. We need to expose it so that those who are running for office the next round again. They will be, you know, this is a part of that, that group that, that pushed through stuff just to get it pushed through. Things need to slow up at this point and get ready for the new council because it is a new day. It's going to be, I'm feeling so good about the city of Wilmington now, now, you know, we're gonna do all in our power to help with the shooting and the violence and, and even with the poverty in the city. But the, but the legislative part and the, and the, and the council part, I think it's gonna be a better cooperation. I think it's gonna reflect the city at large as opposed to certain aspects of the city. So I'm starting to feel good about that and, and, but there are, there are some who not feeling so good.
Yeah, because, you know, I think some people are nervous, they, some people don't like the unknown, right? So again, you know, they see the incoming freshman class as wild cards because we've all done our own stuff. We've all threw our own advocacy, our own voices, our own, you know, whatever we have been involved with, we've taken hold of that and worked very hard of it. And I'm honored to be in an incoming class with two, two powerhouses in my eyes in Alex Hackett and Christian Willhaller.
Who's the other person?
Christian Willhaller over in the 5th District.
I don't know that person.
And real big on housing, right? So again, I'm, you know, super excited to roll up my sleeves and work with them. But then also I'm excited to work with some of the current members as well too. And hopefully they don't allow other people to tell them how we are gonna actually work along with other people.
I think, I think personally, and because we have most of the city who really watch our show, I think personally you have, it's the right team. Even if you have a bad apple for real, the bad apple will survive and do what is needed when you have the right surroundings. That's why I'm hoping that, you know, your, your, your city council president will, will really take serious to the position. And now there's no more lame duck, no more, I don't have any power, let's move it forward. But you, you named two persons, I don't know the one brother you named from the 5th District. I think, who, who is, who is it?
So Christian used to be in charge of the land bank, worked in, works with West Side Groves, works, has a consulting firm. She does a lot of work with the, yeah, sorry. She does a lot of work with the Homes Campaign, with affordable housing, making sure, you know, we're supporting small businesses and everything and just a very grassroots person. I think when you pair that with someone like an Alex Hackett, who wants to work with minority developers who want to look at affordable housing in the city to give opportunity not only for our seniors to age in place, but then also for young people to grow their families here as well too. And then you throw me in there as well too, I care very much about housing. But then also I care about the, the health services around it as well too. So it's full wraparound services. We, and workforce is huge for me. You, you can't have a strong workforce without, you know, without younger families coming in and building here, right? And then you can't do that if you don't have the houses for them to come into the city. That way we can have more wages coming into the city and we can present that to businesses and say, look, come here, we have the workforce who's trained, who's ready, I mean, who's qualified to help you succeed. And then by them bringing their business here and additional employees here, that increases wage taxes and everything like that. So it brings more money and revenue into the city when we do things like that. But we have to do it in a way that is focused on the residents. And I think, you know, that's what all of us want to do is make sure we're focusing on the people who are currently here.
Good, and, and, and I think that'll put to rest so those individuals who really didn't believe in, whether it be yourself, Hackett and others, to really be able to be objective. Because one of the things, I just had Hackett on my show this morning on the Coffee with Curry. And one of the things that I was kind of urging him to make sure that he remain, and that is to be able to sit and, and, and negotiate and compromise and not compromise and compromising his values, but compromise and saying, look, in order for me to help my people, I, I need to make sure I support this legislation, but this legislation got some things that we need to debate about. You know, because, because I think what has held this, 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 this 109th Council up is that there've been, everybody was stuck in their position. And then you had your seven, who their position was to support the administration. And so, so it's like they still, everybody else still on the side of the line crying about what wasn't gonna happen and how I'm not gonna vote for this one, but then you have those seven that saying, you know, we're gonna keep rolling and make this stuff happen.
And it's so many things and you know, there's so many different people we can talk to as well too, who has just institutional knowledge as well.
Yes.
One of the, probably the best resources is someone who I used to talk to and that was Ted Blunt before he passed away. But then also now I'm talking to former Mayor James Baker.
I haven't seen him, is he still around?
He's still around. And he was actually one of our advisors for the Reparation Task Force, so I really got to know him even more.
Okay, when I call him, he shows up.
During that year and a half period. But again, you know, council has the ability to legislate some power to itself, to help its community. And it starts with understanding the power we have by having to pass a balanced budget and making sure we're doing things to the best of our ability to get things done. I think one of the best things that we could do as a full council is creating a capital budget for council so that we can work on projects in our district and help different groups within our individual districts. And then of course, the at-larges and council president have the entire city. But again, that's what it should be about. How can we help build these communities and making sure these projects are meeting the metrics in which they need? So again, you know, I'm super excited about the budget time coming up, which is, you know, it's starting already, especially with the transition and everything, but really going into the next year and, and.
Who votes on that new budget?
So the new budget probably won't be voted on until April, so the new council, the 109th.
My, my question, not my question, my, my encouragement and excitement is, is that, well, first before I ask that question, let me just say, put it this way. How does the current council feel about the Chief of Staff in the office of the city council? How are they feeling about that person?
So I, I believe they all like Mona and, you know, she's been there for about a year and a half now at this point. Daniel Walker, who's now the Deputy Secretary of Health, was in the position prior to that, to start in this session. I, I feel as though they like her.
Okay, and the reason why I'm asking that is because, you know, we're not saying any names, but we, we're hearing through the scuttleboughs that there's a person who's going to be the Chief of Staff for the mayor's office. And I think if you have two people who, who can articulate together the desires of the city council, desires of the mayor's office and understand budget.
Yeah.
And, and, and I'm only giving them more clues because people are trying to figure out who, who they talking about. Me and Hackett talked about it on, on the show today, early today too. But I think what that will do is that will certainly give you all the opportunity, that number one, that is the balance of budget, where people are happy. And I'm glad to hear you make a comment that I've never heard a person say in city council, and that is, y'all need to have a capital budget too. Everything should not have to go through the mayor's office. Some things should come through city council because you all are representing different districts and you understand some of the needs much better than others. So I think this is gonna be great, Kobe. And in the weeks to come, we're gonna continue to talk about where we are. And if we need to bring up, I'll be the forerunner of it. If we need to bring up that people are not talking and communicating and making sure that the people's needs are being met during this lame ducks session or time, then we need to just talk about it and not be afraid of it. Because we're not hostile, we, we two educated black men who are just talking.
Absolutely.
Okay, we're gonna take a quick commercial break and we'll be right back.
Join us live for our weekly worship. Every Sunday at 9:00 AM. On Facebook and YouTube.
Well, Pastor, I'm doing the best I can, but I still gotta have a little Chardonnay and I still gotta have a little this and I gotta still sneak around. The devil is a liar, that's an excuse.
Wilmington's most exciting church. This land we love belongs to all of us. Yet not everyone is treated equally. Right now, millions of Americans are fighting for the things promised to all by the Constitution. Freedom, justice, equality. The ACLU is leading the fight to protect our civil liberties. Together, we can protect and advance our rights nationwide because we, the people, means all of us. Learn how the ACLU is defending the right to vote, free speech, and other civil liberties at myaclu.org.
Christopher Holton, I'm very active. It was a Saturday morning, normally I go for a normal walk.
With no warning, Chris suffered a near fatal heart attack. But thankfully, Brian Buckley, a bystander, saw him collapse and rushed to help.
He did this big gasp for air and then just stopped. It's like I went into autopilot. It's like all that training I did back in the day around CPR just, just magically came out of nowhere.
Because of the CPR training that Brian received, Chris did make it and didn't die on the trail that day. CPR training provided by the American Heart Association.
Looking at your hands, these two hands could save a life.
Being a father, you want to be around, you want to be around for your kids.
Heart disease is America's number one killer. To learn more about how the American Heart Association helps save lives, go to helpheart.org.
We are women first, but women with disabilities last.
During a military exercise, we crashed and I broke my neck.
When I was in the Air Force, an accident changed my life. I couldn't have imagined the injustices I would face.
Every day, women like me go to the doctor for annual checkups for conditions like breast cancer. Early detection saved my life. But women with disabilities face a cruel reality. Inaccessible medical facilities and equipment.
In the 25 years since my injury, I have not seen a gynecologist. There's not one accessible OB-GYN in my community.
I found lumps in my breasts. I went to a doctor's office I was told was accessible, but when I got there, I couldn't get through the front door.
I don't know where I'd be today without access to testing. Our veterans deserve better. Help PVA fight for access at pva.org.
Smiles are powerful. A simple smile can light up a whole room. And for 25 years, Smile Train has been lighting up the world with smiles. And each smile marks a step towards a brighter future. As the world's largest cleft lip and palate charity, Smile Train has supported more than 2 million life-changing cleft surgeries in over 90 countries, leaving a legacy of resilience, joy, and beaming smiles for generations of children. To learn more about cleft lips and palates and how Smile Train is supporting the cleft community all over the world, please visit smiletrain.org/learn. Smile Train, lighting up the world with smiles for 25 years.
Hey, this is Pastor Curry, pastor of the He's Eye and Fair Baptist Church, Wilmington's most exciting church, the church that love ya and anything you can do about it. What we're gonna do today is we're gonna have a real good conversation. I'm excited. Every Sunday at 11:00 AM. Why don't you call somebody real quick? Tell them Coffee with Curry is on. And let's get after it.
I'm Nahim Hines, professional football player and proud supporter of the Muscular Dysphypathy Association. My mom was diagnosed with muscular dystrophy when I was 14 and I watched her struggle. But MDA helped her get the best treatments and care and they also help kids like my buddy Ethan.
My name is Ethan, thanks to the Muscular Dysphypathy Association and people like you, I have more hope than ever before. From day one, they've treated me like family at my local care center. And MDA is the only one that funds over 150 care centers across the US to help provide state-of-the-art care for adults and kids like me.
MDA has been transforming the lives of people living with muscular dystrophy, ALS, and other related neuromuscular diseases. They fund the research for breakthrough treatments, care, and cures. And MDA provides supports thousands of families like mine and Ethan's in communities like yours. Thanks to MDA, kids and adults can live life to its fullest. Join us and learn more at mda.org today.
Breast cancer is the most common cancer in women. One out of eight or 12% of women will develop breast cancer in their lifetime. Unfortunately, Hawaii has one of the highest numbers of new cases of breast cancer. We're sixth out of the 50 states for a number of breast cancer cases. We know on average, 40 is the age at which we start with breast cancer screening. And sometimes we know that it's important to get early detection and screening. We have high-risk programs to do that.
I started getting mammograms in my early 30s because I have a family history of breast cancer. My mom and her mom both had been previously diagnosed. And I truly believe that it was that early annual mammogram that saved my life.
Andrea's story really helps to showcase how important it is to have early detection and screening and really tailor treatments and management according to that. It really also shows how brave she was to share about her story and personalize it because we all know someone who's been affected by breast cancer.
And we're back. Well, Kobe, you know, I, I don't know whether, it's so much happening and I get nervous sometimes when we get to the Kobe corner because I don't even know what you're gonna throw out at us with all that's going on around this country right now. So I'm just gonna just, just take a wholesome moment and just let you do you. What's going on with Kobe's corner?
Yeah, so you know, I want to talk about, and like I said, I'm gonna keep talking about the, the Trump cabinet picks until his full cabinet is picked. The Senate is gonna try to confirm people even before he gets sworn in.
Do you think that's gonna happen?
Not until after January 3rd, when the Senate takes the majority. But you know, people have to resign these positions too. And I hope all Biden's cabinet picks hold on until the day of, until the day Trump is sworn in. But I, I just have some very interesting things I want to talk about. So Trump has picked physician and TV store, star, Dr. Mehmet Oz. Dr. Oz, y'all remember him. He ran for US senate in 2022 and lost. Will serve as the administrator of the US Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services. That is extremely dangerous because he campaigned on the campaign promise of cutting Medicaid and Medicare. And you know, I hope that people hold the line and he doesn't get in. It's going to be very hard because I, I feel as though he's picking some outrageous picks in other positions so that people have to spend up all their political capital stopping them. And they let people like Mehmet Oz go through. Medicare and Medicaid is a critical service to so many, especially here in Delaware and in Wilmington, that if it is cut or if it's extremely reduced, you will have loss of life. You will have people who won't be able to afford doctor visits, won't be able to afford medicine, who will take a already very costly healthcare system and exacerbate that even more. And that is extremely dangerous, 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 dangerous policy. But it also gets worse than that. The new secretary of education, which everyone has been waiting for, holding their breath for to see who it will be. He picked Betsy DeBoltz last time, who is a charter school advocate, who has completely tried to destabilize public schools. He decided to go with someone who has zero educational background.
Just to fulfill her.
Who you all know, her, her company, well, her former company. WWE co-founder Linda McMahon. And for you who don't know what the WWE is, the Worldwide Wrestling Entertainment.
Yeah.
It has nothing to do with education. Unless you're talking about acting. Has picked her to be the head of education. Now, she was in his last administration. He, she was his small business administrator. She stepped down from that role to become the co-chair of one of his super PACs. She's an amazing fundraiser for the Republican Party. I will give her props there. She's a billionaire whose husband has multiple sexual assault harassment. They covered up sexual harassment. They covered up the rape of female wrestlers, including one wrestler by the name of Ashley, who ended up committing suicide. She was raped by a US troop, by, in Afghanistan for salute to troops. Wrestling promotion, that's actually why that promotion ended. And they, they discontinued doing it over there because she was raped. But instead of getting her the services they need, they kind of pushed her out the organization and she ended up committing suicide. She is going to be our new education secretary. And why I'm so upset about this is because the Department of Education, since it was created, has tried to fit some of the eels of our education system here in America. And people who know me know I've been very critical of Delaware's Department of Education, our education system here. But the federal education has created opportunity for minorities to be able to go into college enforcing things like affirmative action, which has now been overturned by the Supreme Court. They are systematically tearing away at the very fabric of things that our ancestors and some of our grandparents marched for and fought for back in the 60s, right? So again, you know, we have to get off our butts and be very vigilant during this time because it's going to get bad. People are losing rights left and right. And you know, people, oh, Dr. King was able to do it in one march. That's what they teach in history books right now. No, it took years of strategic planning, organizing and mobilization to get some of these victories. And we're slowly watching Donald Trump erode all of that through his racist policies and picks like Linda McMahon.
Yeah. But you know, you, you named two people just then, and I didn't jump in because you were on your role, but both of them serves for one purpose and that is to disrupt and destroy. He said he was going to do certain things. He's not going to find anybody who's near education or anybody who's near Medicaid, who, who been around and understand the system. He want to find somebody who can just break it and destroy it to the best of their ability. And you absolutely right, it is going to get scary. I hear people all the time talking about, well, when Trump was in, I had better money. Let me be honest with you. You think you had more money when Trump was in? Wait until you can't go to the doctor.
Right.
Wait, wait, wait until you can, I mean, I mean, because they have cut it off. Wait until your children are, have some special needs in education and that whole program has been eliminated. And you were like, I need help. I need services. That's when you're going to realize that this is really serious. So I don't want, I don't want to cut you off, but I just want, he, he said he wants to be a disruptive disruptor and he doesn't have much more time. So in this four years, he's going to try to destroy everything that was built up over time. And listen, the Department of Education was starting in 74, 72, somewhere in there, and they got 3,900 employees. Can you imagine him cutting, starting cutting that stuff up and slicing it up? And it's going to be, it's going to get bad.
It's going to be bad. It's going to be really bad. Moving on to the next cabinet pick that he's picked. He picked TV reality star and former congressman and Fox News business host Sean Duffy to be the secretary of transportation. That's probably one of his more sane picks so far and that's saying, that's saying a lot.
It's only sane because he ain't got no history. Don't mean his decision is going to be sane.
Yeah. And then outside of that, he picked Brandon Carr to head the Federal Communication Commission. That's what gives out, you know, access to media to be on the, the airways and stuff like that. And then I want to go back to someone who I talked about last week because I just can't stop talking about this. Matt Gaetz, his pick for AG. There has been more debate since he resigned from his seat about whether or not the ethics report will be released. For the last three days, there's been hearings and meetings between the House Ethics Committee. And they took a vote that failed on party lines. The House Ethics Committee is one of the only committees that are evenly split. Three Republicans, three Democrats, no matter who's in charge, no matter how big the difference is, it always stays even. And they took a vote to release the report. And the report is still made it. The three Democrats voted to release, the three Republicans voted not to release. There was another vote later on that was unanimous to finish the report. And what that means, because I don't think the media is really explaining it the best way. What it means is the report, the actual investigation is done and over with. The report isn't in final draft mode, which means making it presentable to people. Having a appendix, having a table of contents, having, you know, you know, a summary, executive summary and stuff like that. And then having the full report as well too. So they have voted to go ahead and finish the report. And then they will have to take another vote on releasing it. That will probably be done within the next few weeks. If they don't, you know, tell staff, hey, get this done by the end of the weekend. But they have a few weeks to, to finish it as per normal. So again, Matt Gaetz is under investigation for having sex with a minor. And then also paying two minors through, and they found this out through Venmo accounts, paying two minors for sexual acts as well too. So again, why he was a congressman. That's all they have scope of is from that January 3rd, when he was sworn in to when he resigned. And this has happened while he's been a congressman. So again, there has been US senators who are in charge of confirming him to the AG position, who are saying, hey, you know, met with the guy, nothing personal against him. I do want to see the report though. I want to know what was Ashley saying.
Do you think Trump is going to let them not vote again? But do you, if, if Matt Gaetz go up for vote with the Republicans having 53 seats, do you really think they're not going to vote, confirm him?
So I'm glad you bring that up because there, there, there's a few individuals who could stop and take, stop some of the picks and, and take them on. And actually, the one name that people may be shocked that I'm going to say is Mitch McConnell.
Well, he can, because he not running again.
He's not running again. He still has a lot of influence there and he's very well known to not like Donald Trump. And now that he's not.
But he's still been voting with him. The reason why Donald Trump can run for office is because he voted, it's about the, the judicial system would handle it.
But he was leader of the Senate, so he had to still get other votes for other things. He's not leader no more, so he's an independent voice again. When you step out of those leadership roles, you're almost relieved of any other obligations, especially if you're about to retire. So he may be one person that may go both ways. Another person is Senator Corning, who just lost the election to John Thune Ford leader, who Trump is not a big fan of. He is probably going to have a primary challenge in 2026 from the indicted AG of Texas, two-time indicted AG of Texas, Ken Paston. So again, you may see him kind of push back against Trump since Trump is supporting his opponent. You always count in Susan Collins and Lisa Markowski. Both of them are up in 2026, but both of them have beat back challenges before under Trump. And Trump endorsed individuals, they are known as more centrist individuals. You also have Bill Cassidy who's there. So Bill Cassidy is the senator from Louisiana. He's a doctor, but he is, I believe, one of the few remaining senators who actually voted to impeach Donald Trump. So again, this is going to be really interesting to see how he votes over these confirmations and over these next few years that he's down there. Another person who's facing a Trump-like primary most likely is the senator from North Carolina, Tom Tillis, who barely won his election a few years ago. But he may face Mark Robinson, the guy who wanted to be the black Nazi, who Trump loves. So again, he may try to show himself to independent voters. Hey, I'm an independent person. Don't vote for right wing MAGA Republicans. So again, there's a lot of things going on that could play in this. It's going to be really interesting going forward. But again, I hope Matt Gaetz does not become the next AG for. Donald Trump has skipped the FBI background check on Matt Gaetz and on Tossie Galbert, who's the director, who was nominated to be the Director of National Intelligence. He has skipped the background checks on both of those. So again, very unusual times that we're in. But moving forward, on the other side of the chamber, I want to talk about, you know, we, we've talked about the history that was made here in Delaware. We have the first African-American and first woman representing us in the US senate and Senator-elect Lisa Blunt Rochester. The person who replaced her, Sarah McBryce, state senator here, incoming Congresswoman, is the first transgender Congresswoman. And while everyone is trying to figure out how they're going to fight back under this agenda, how they're going to get their priorities picked. Representative from South Carolina Nancy Mace has introduced a bill that will ban Sarah from using the bathrooms down there.
Women bathrooms.
Women's bathroom, yes. Which is really interesting to me because one, it's definitely derived in hate. And again, the, the speaker at the house, Mike Johnson, either put out a statement saying regarding facilities throughout the US Capitol complex, all single sets facilities in the Capitol and the house buildings such as restrooms, changing rooms, locker rooms are reserved for individuals of that bi- biological sex. At the end of the day, Nancy Mace is saying she's doing this to protect women, right? Nancy Mace has teamed up with Marjorie Taylor Greene and have worked to get this resolution presented and get, try to get this rule change in. I want to highlight two things they have said since they're trying to protect women, right? Marjorie Taylor Greene, in the same week that she's working on this, says that if the House Ethics Committee releases the report about a former colleague who she's worked with quite often, Matt Gaetz, having sex with a minor, she will release all the information she knows about sexual assault from members of her caucus, which is the Republican caucus, since she's been there. Well, let's take a pause. You know this and you're not saying anything, but you say you want to protect women. Nancy Mace talks about this, but then yet, when it comes to abortion, if a woman's raped, she has to see it through to term. If a woman's life is in danger, she has to see it through to term. No exceptions whatsoever. Nancy Mace cares so much about where someone's going to be taken a number one and number two, that she hasn't even introduced any policies to actually do anything that she talks about, that she campaigns on. But what she has done, which is illegal, she's made a video within the US House Capitol and then put it in a fundraising email. You cannot use resources, taxpayer money, right, to campaign on. And that's all this is for. They're using this to fundraise. So again, I think it's very sad that we're seeing this time and time again. At the end of the day, let's focus on policy. Let's get finished on it.
And I think that's where Sarah is doing a phenomenal job in, in that she's, all of her responses have been, I did not come here to debate over toilets.
Yes.
I came to help Delawareans and other citizens across the country with their food bills and things of that nature. Let me, let me add to what you were sharing regarding this whole thing. It's never about defending or protecting women in this case. What it really is about is their cultural war. And what has to stop happening is that they felt they got some leeway because of that one ad they did. Now let me go ahead and attack this individual. But if you go into any restroom, whether it be the men's restroom or the women's restroom, there's stalls there. We're not sitting in open, you're the one or the two, like you, you, you just alluded to. We, we, it's private, okay? I think this is just outright disrespectful. Now, there are some going to disagree with me because they're going to feel like whoever the biological sex is. But if it was an open communal bathroom where everything is exposed, then maybe we, we, we need to have a conversation, I guess. I don't even know if I want to have one then. But, but the reality of it is, this did not have to come up. This did not have to be an issue. They wanted to demonize her and they did not succeed because she did not respond the way they thought she was going to respond. Hats off to Sarah McBryne. She was on our show and I'm going to invite her back. Not to talk about that issue, but talk about how, some of the things that I'm sure she's going to get done too.
But yeah, but again, you know, there is, things are very expensive right now. And that's what the Republicans ran on, inflation, inflation, inflation. I would love to see them start focusing on that. But that takes me to my next point. Childcare costs here in Delaware and across the nation, but especially here in Delaware. 77% of families that was surveyed have found that it's either trouble finding affordable childcare or a childcare is just way out of reach for them. They're spending more than they are on their car payments or, and some, and more than they're doing on their rent or mortgage, right? Childcare cost has extremely gone up and to find a high quality center for some communities is very hard, right? There's gaps. I think that's why, you know, Ezan Fair has a childcare facility, the PAL. That's why it's so important for community hubs to create opportunities for early learning for our youngest citizens, right? Some of them can't even talk yet. But again, having their, the proper nutrition at that critical age range of zero to three, and some people say zero to five, but zero to three is really where most of your brain is developing. So having the. So having the, the proper, well-trained um, professional childcare, early learning um, centers is going to be critical, especially in the black community. And I know y'all are affordable, we are as well too, but we don't see that replicated too much throughout this state.
With the quality. Because there's some people who are affordable, but you wouldn't let your, your animals or anyone stay there in their centers. But let me just share this too, I think there was a mistake, and I'm gonna hope that if, if Matt have an open forum, one of the mistakes that I think that happened when they got rid of STARS. That was Governor Markell's um, 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 incentive, and it worked. It worked because it, it, it rewarded centers. You had to have a certain amount of purchaser care recipients, which meant the poor had to be a part of the progress. And, and you only got extra money for the children who were underprivileged. So the, I think the system, but they gotta got rid of it, now they doing this, you know, teacher incentive thing, they, and, and what I'm upset about, and I've not really articulated to them yet, is that even though you, you, you can't of, if, if, if not even a cent of your, your population are those who want purchase of care. And with the rate of purchase of care, it did go up some, they did, you know, increase it some. But if that's all you, the real revenue that you're getting, you're not having enough, which is forcing people to seek, especially good centers, to seek more children who are private pay. And that's a problem, Kobe, and I think it needs to be revisited. Department of Education is taking it over, but I think it needs to be revisited, cause some rich group decided, this is what we're gonna do.
So I'm glad you brought that up, because uh, a part of the transition team, um, one of the subcommittees in which Matt Myers has launched, um, is the Care and Community Actions Committee. And that is being co-chaired um, by Lieutenant Governor-elect Kyle Evans Gay and Aaron Goldstein, the Chief uh, Chief of Staff Attorney for the Court of Chancery. And their focus areas are health, social service, child welfare, um, and public safety. That is that entire one. I know Kyle very well, and Kyle has worked on Universal um, pre-K. I know she cares deeply about childcare, so I think this would be a good bridge to sit down and talk about, you know, how we uh, can do better in this state. Because I know with the STARS program, you know, there was a lot of things about, oh, is it truly equitable? Because you get higher star ratings, um, if you have like a playground and, you know, a safe, which is good if you have the land, right? So I think that came into play, especially downstate as well too. But again, I, me personally, taking all policy and everything else off, I personally like the STAR program. I see where others had issues with it, don't get me wrong, and you know, I try to be as, well, not as biased and neutral on some things. But again, I think the system could have been tweaked to made, to be made better. Instead of moving away from.
But they continue to go away from it, Kobe, but the point is, even with this, let, let's just use the example you gave about there being a, a, a playground, but you got a certain amount of points. When we first started, we went to five within, because we skipped three and four and went to five. We didn't have a playground at first, but we had, we scored high in so many of the other areas, that the playground wasn't that significant.
That's true.
And but then, now we got one, but I just, as a matter of fact, they paid for us to get one. So it, it became better, we achieved, we won, and we were being watched. It wasn't just do what you wanna do, and if things, if you don't get no complaints, you're good. I just, I just think that that's something that needs to come back, and we're gonna have a real discussion on that. And I'm glad you know what committee it is, cause that's where I'm gonna focus my attention.
Right, and let me, well, since we're on the topic, I'll tell you the other uh, three committees that there is. There's Education and Livelihood uh, Committee, which is education, economic development and labor. Sustainable Systems and Resonant Community Committee, which is housing, agriculture, environment and transportation. And uh, look, the Education and Livelihoods Committee is co-chaired by Senator Jack Walsh, Professor Dana DeVos, Clinical uh, Practice Director of Relay Delaware. Sustainable Systems is co-chaired by the Sussex County Administrator Todd Lawson, Todd Lawson, Jennifer Cohen from uh, CEO of Leadership Delaware, and Tony uh, Di Prima, Retired Executive Director of the uh, Delaware Sustainable Energy Utility. And then the last one is Govern- Governance, Innovation and Operational Excellence Committee, and that is co-chaired by Senator Laura Sturgeon and Anas Ben Adi, the CFO of Delaware State University and the former State Housing Authority um, Director under Carney. The focus area is there is finance, technology and budget management.
Okay, very good, you have one more thing on there, and then we're gonna go to.
Yeah, so again, my last point, uh, teacher retention is gonna be huge. There's uh, multiple reports that are coming out about this over the next few weeks. But I just wanna say, going forward, uh, we have to look at one of the growing challenges here. We have a, a education system that is failing us right now, um, but they um, they, the surveys are showing that seventy-five percent of teachers um, are saying that they are more likely to retire or leave education earlier than they originally planned, um, which is gonna cause even more issues um, here in the state of Delaware. I think right now, one of the best things we can do um, for municipalities is to look at how we can really partner with our school districts and partner with the State Department of Education to do more workforce housing, right? To incentiv- to incentivize teachers to stay in the classroom and help reduce cost of living for them, right? If you have a reduced mortgage um, as a teacher, um, while your pay may not be better, you're spending less on a, a big lump sum of money that you're putting out each month, right? So working with them to see how we can get things done is gonna be critical for these next uh, few years for the state.
And the, and the retention issue is not just with the school age children, it's, it's in childcare as well.
Yeah, this across the board, all the way up to college too.
Yes, yes.
So again, you know, it, it's, it's a profession that is underpaid by a lot. Shout out to every teacher who had to do that virtual learning um, during a pandemic. I, I, I saw the other side of the classroom, and I was like, I don't know how they doing this, I would have quit. So again, hats off to them, but we really have to make sure we're doing everything that we can keep people interested in that profession going forward.
Yeah, our children are, we have, and that's our legacy. We have to protect our children, and you, earlier when you were talking about the, the, that, which are STARS, early learning is the, is fundamental.
Yes.
It, it develops the love a child has. And I often talk about my, my daughter, who was a student of our center here at Isan Fair, and my daughter has not seen a B. Our whole, cause we, we, we try our best to put in them a love for learning. It's, it's, it's fun, it's, it's popular, it's cool. To be smart is important, because you, cause, cause, cause at, at some point, you're gonna leave that adolescent phase where you're going to enter to the real world, and we have to make sure that they're, they take very seriously their education. So we don't know exactly um, what's going on with Trump and his appointments, neither do we know what's going on with the, with the state. But we're gonna have to figure something out, and I think I'm gonna try to communicate with that one group. Just see if we can have some dialogue and, and if I can lend any information, cause all of my degrees, other than my theological degrees, are in education, and I, and I tend to love it passionately, because I think that's, that's, that's our key to the future. Well, Kobe, is there, um, I guess, we don't want to, went over a little bit of, of the time, but it, it's been, it's been a great day for us, and we had a great show today, and I think everything on my docket is taken care of, we ain't gonna talk about Trump today, other than his appointments that you talked about earlier. But I just hope that we do better with your conversations with, and not only yours, but other city council members, with old council members, so that we can have a good, smooth transition. Anything else you have, that maybe you forgot any announcements or any of those things?
That's all I have, that's all I have.
That's all you have, that's all he had, that's all he had, well, that's all he had, that's all I have. And I'm gonna take this opportunity to thank all of you who continue to watch us, continue to show your encouragement. Many times you see us in different places, whether you be at Planet Fitness or wherever, and you are saying you're watching the show, we appreciate that. We don't have a big budget, all we do is just get together and, and try to make sure we give you some facts, and then we keep going on with our own commentary. Thank you so very much for the time we spent together today, until the next time, God bless.
Take care, y'all.